I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. Before we start, I just want to welcome Shannon Nutway to the board. She was elected at our last election, and here she is for the first time.
Thanks.
So, welcome. First order of business is joining in the finance committee to talk about minor transfers and the end of year presented by Vicki Moore.
Okay, so originally this started out to be one line, but as the days progressed and in finishing the warrant up today with Joyce, we found some other accounts that were going to run in the negative with some of the bills to be paid, and then those accounts subsequently due to obligations from utility bills and those types of things which we will need to pay for the next few months, we would become short. So, right now, I think you guys have this, I'm hoping, the revised one with the Board of Health on the last one, the last part?
Yes.
Okay. I did that at the last minute this afternoon. So, first off, we have administrative expenses. We want to transfer the balance in the administrative assistant wage line to the administrative expenses. We currently have someone doing our minutes, and we need to be able to pay that person to do those minutes. And since we don't have an administrative assistant currently because Kevin is gone, that money is available to use for those payments.
This is covered until the end of the year?
Yes.
Yes.
Building inspector salary, we want to take $1,500 to the building inspector expenses to pay for the remaining of his fiscal year stipend, which is $200 for the month of May and June. And then, we also need to pay $480 for the commissioner expenses up to this past Monday where Tom actually received his commissioner's license. So, we won't have that going forward, but we need to be able to cover that payment for, I think it's Joe Finkevich, for previous work that he's done for us, and some miscellaneous travel that Tom might have for some meetings. And that should get him through to the end of the year. The next one would be park commission expenses and park commission wages. Currently, the park commission wages are in a deficit due to the mowing that started to occur, and the expense line had some money in there that we were just going to transfer over to cover those wages. I have to speak with Randall to figure out how much more the park may need for that wage line item, but we'll get there in the next round of budget line item transfers. The next line would be water operating expenses. We're going to take the money from the water salary support, which originally in the budget for FY15 was for Joe Salattery's position in staying on and helping the new water superintendent kind of get acclimated to his position and taking the knowledge that Joe has up here and somehow putting it on paper. But, I calculated out, whatever he gets paid for his salary through the end of the year, there'll be plenty of money left over to take this $15,000 and move to water expenses. Currently, with the bills that are in that warrant, we would be in a deficit of $6,648. And then, we're going to have other additional bills for the remaining months for fifth costs such as utilities to run the well, and we will eventually might need to buy some water, that type of thing. Because, as you can see, it's pretty throughout the side. I don't know if that will cover right to the end of the year, but it should. You know, if there's unexpected expenses that come up for the water department, there is money left in the support wage line and also the regular wage line because Joe wasn't in the support role for the whole year, and then Tom wasn't here at the beginning. So, there's enough, a little bit of leeway in those two line items if we need to do that later. All right, so Board of Health is actually on here twice. The Board of Health, for $4.50 from the clerical wages, which they don't have a clerical person at the moment, there's the inspector and the administrative agent that's doing all the paperwork, is actually coming out of the wage line. And because we didn't have a health agent for so many weeks, there's definitely enough money in there. But, currently, this $4.50 was going to be a deficit based on that warrant that you guys are going to sign tonight. But then, Geraldine Swanson, who is temporary, came to me with a letter from Shelley O'Connell, who is on the health department, and requested that $800 to be transferred because they need a few miscellaneous supplies, but they also need to upgrade their restaurant inspection tools. They need to be recalibrated and kind of redone. They haven't, I guess, she said they're about 15 years old. I don't know if you know about that equipment at all, but I guess the inspection equipment is in need of some upgrading.
You have to turn it on, too.
At this point.
We're green. Restaurant inspection tools are usually just thermometers.
I guess that was my first thought, was what kind of tools are they going to use to inspect the?
Yeah, I guess there's an infrared one that costs a little bit of money to replace.
$120 bucks.
Yeah, so, they just wanted enough money because they're not sure how much it would cost for some of those items, and they needed some other minor.
I mean, I have no problem with them buying the equipment. Obviously, I do this professionally.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, you know, they have the tools, they'll do a better job. It's a faster job, is really what it comes down to.
Yeah.
And will the extra increase in wages, the temporary, both of them will still have money left over?
Yes. There's a, this came from the clerical wage line, and then there's money left in the agent salary line item.
Okay, because the clerical is part of the combination.
For FY16, this is 15, it's to pay for, yes.
Temporary, yes, in both wage lines.
Vicki, just so you know, there's everything from black lights to temperature sensitive tape that's used depending on if you're doing commercial dishwashers.
Yeah, I didn't get into the details of what that was.
$800, to me, sounds reasonable.
Yeah, and I think the other pieces, they needed some, you know, just whatever supplies they might, not that they definitely need them, but you never know what might come up by the end of the year. And I'd rather just do a transfer of one time instead of like $10 here, $10 here, $10 here, $10 here. And then, the last line is the assessors expenses. I have a letter here from the assessors board, and they wanted to transfer $10,000 from assistant assessor wages to assessor expenses. Say that 10 times fast. For training, some training classes that will be coming up in the next couple of months. And they need to purchase copies of new GIS-based assessor maps from the vendor by the end of the fiscal year and some other miscellaneous expenses. And I'm sure you could probably elaborate a little bit more on those if everyone needed that information, so.
I have a question. Isn't in the fiscal 16 budget, isn't there money in there for new GIS maps?
Five thousand.
$5,000.
I have some questions on this line.
So, if they're in the budget for next year, why are we buying them in this fiscal year? Do you have any, do you know, Shannon?
That would be for '17. '16 goes for '17. Like, right now, we bought the maps for the following year. We're always like a year ahead. Like Lori is working in advance.
So, when we spend the money that we allotted for fiscal 16, it won't be until this time next year for the following fiscal year?
Right.
And my concern is that we have a budget for expenses of a little over $2,000. This is a $10,000 item that wasn't planned for, and we're just wondering what's going to happen in next year if we're that far over budget this year for expenses?
Well, I think for FY16 budget, they, and I believe that we approved most of that, there was money in there for trainings.
I'm going out this year's budget.
Right. Well, this year's budget.
There was money in $2,100, I think, in the expense line.
Correct, because when we sat with the assessors and said, "Okay, you need to cut so much money out of your budget," they chose to cut it out of the expense line and not of the wage line. So, certain individuals didn't get to go for particular trainings that, I guess, that they would need to go for, so.
So, just one question on the trainings. Going to training in 2015, is that a repetition in 2016? The funds that were requested for training in 2016 budget?
Right, is it the same training this year?
I mean, it's just coming on the heels. We have two months left of this fiscal year, and I'm trying to sort out.
Right, is it repetitive?
Training and training and maps and maps. I understand what you said, you're a year ahead. Is that also true for training?
Training is continuous. Like, for instance, Lori, who's the assessor, has to keep up so many hours of training per year. I think it's within a three-year period, she needs so many. So, each class is worth so many points or so many credits. So, honestly, I don't have the same credits as what she does. So, if you wanted, I think it was Gary who put it in.
Yeah.
Probably have an explanation done and can have that for you.
Can I see the letter?
Yeah, you know, if you want it broken down.
Yeah, it was just a little vague.
Right.
And again, a lot over budget, so what are we doing next year?
What is the expenses budgeted at next year?
Seventy-one hundred.
Seventy-one hundred? And this year, they were 2,100?
Twenty-one hundred. This makes it 12,000. So, how are we going to manage the budget next year?
We have a hard time hearing this.
Sorry. I just want to make sure I have this right. So, for fiscal 16, we budgeted 7,100. Fiscal 15, we budgeted 2,100, but now we're adding $10,000, which really makes it 12,000. 12,100. So, in reality, we're going to be short $5,000.
Except we did a separate line item for the maps. So, in essence, we budgeted next year 12,000. $5,000 for maps, 7,100 for expenses.
So, we should be covered next year.
So, it should be the same as this year with this trend?
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, sorry. Okay, thanks. You didn't do the gas and electric at the Larrabee building?
Oh, sorry.
All right, so, gas in the Larrabee, we were going to take $1,500 from the Larrabee building expenses to move to the gas and electric for Larrabee. This is for, I think it was, you said Eversource bill for the month of April?
Yes.
Correct. And so, until we know what the amounts are for May and June, we might need to find more money in a different line item.
So, this is just April?
And this is just Eversource. So, remember, we have Eversource and HG&E. We knew this was likely to be a problem once the rates started going up. We should have more of a settled rate for Eversource moving forward, but the first meter reading was until the following month because it was April 21st, or 27th, or something like that. So, it will go into effect this next cycle when we get it, and we'll see if there's really a difference.
Is there a budget that we're put on?
We have a budget line item for.
Budgeted with the Eversource, because it's been budgeted throughout the year, so it's not skyrocketing?
No, we went to a contract. So, we are in a contract for, I believe, the next 18 months. I cannot think of the name of it at the moment, but essentially, we had gone out to bid. They were the lowest bidder, and the rate was lower than what Eversource currently was. Right now, we're using, up until this date, we were using Eversource as both our supplier and also the, there's another word, distributor. Thank you.
Which was Western Mass Electric?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
How many accounts do you expect to have extra money in the end of the year in order to supply other transfers?
Not much.
To have like a dollar amount?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I'm just wondering what we're getting, you know, how the next month or so is going to go.
I think it really depends, Liz, on what purchases folks need to make in the month of May and June.
Well, they're already, you know, most of people are already kind of at that last limit, you know. I mean, Randall's money in his budget will have to hopefully cover whatever he overspent for snow and ice. You know, the wage lines are the wage lines, and we try to rectify one of those with the articles for the town meeting for the communication wages. But, you know, the people that were just doing transfers to now, like for the building department, this is it. I don't, I mean, they have money in their wage line because we didn't pay Tom the original amount of money at the very beginning because he didn't have his commissioner's license. So, you know, you're talking maybe $1,000 here and there, but there's not a whole lot of money to cover if people decide, "Well, I'm just going to..." And if something extraordinary happens, we have to figure out what we would do.
Is it fair to say that if there's not a purchase order in already, perhaps, is there a deadline for the end of your purchase orders or anything along those lines?
The financial group hasn't come up with a procedure, but it has been on the table, the idea that if you are going to purchase anything after the date of June 1st, that you're required to obtain a purchase order first. For anything from the amount of $0 or 10 cents up to whatever, purposes being really, A, it helps us track it better, B, if you get overly excited with your extra funds and you're buying 400 pencils, it's going to flag us. I will know what's happening.
So, should we send out a memo that reminds people of that?
We don't have that process in place. We decided not to move forward with it, but if it's a desire of the board to have such a process in place, we can surely implement it. I think the mindset of folks was the fact that generally, people do pretty decent, and you have to trust folks in making decisions. And if things go awry and people are buying 400 pencils at the end of the year, or paper clips may it be, then the following year, you set up the policy. But, it's up to the Board of Selectmen. If they feel that it's financially responsible to require everyone to obtain a purchase order regardless of what they're purchasing, should they decide to purchase June 1st on, we can do it.
Does the board have any?
We should consider that.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I think we need to establish this policy.
So, why don't you get, you could start working on that?
Well, the board wants to simply vote right now if they feel there's enough information on the table that should any purchases be made from any departments, June 1st through the end of June, purchase order is required, and the amount that's affected is zero plus.
So, first, then, let me, before we go there, does the finance committee have any other questions or concerns about these line item transfers? No. So, then I would accept a motion to accept the line item transfers as presented.
I'll second.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, I guess I could accept a motion to require any department wishing to purchase anything to submit a PO for any amount prior to June 1st.
You mean post-First?
Post-First.
Thank you, that's what I meant to say.
Just for the record, it's going to be an accounting nightmare to keep track of this. It's going to take me longer to close the books, and it's going to take a lot longer for people. If someone submits a bill and it's for 20 bucks, they don't have a purchase order, I need to kick it back. We need to put a purchase order in. Then, I need to be able to liquidate the purchase order. And if I don't have that, it takes me longer to get those bills paid by June 30th.
But, the whole purpose of it is to deter people from spending money.
But, they're going to spend it regardless, one way or the other?
And you can say no. If there's no money in there, the answer's no.
But, I say that anyway. If there's no money in there legally, I can't let them spend it. And so, I give that back to them. But, if they have money in there and they want to spend it on a purchase order, it becomes very cumbersome for my office to make sure the books are closed and everything gets kind of accounted for at the end of June, so.
Well, how would you suggest that we?
But, if you want to do it, go right ahead. It's just going to be a lot more work for my office.
Vicki, is there a threshold? Like, anything over $100, anything over $200, $500?
Well, we originally set 500 bucks at the beginning of the year.
I'm just wondering how you would suggest we make sure that people are not going over all of a sudden. Do you know what I mean? If we don't have this in place, then how do we?
I guess it doesn't necessarily deter them because they're going to buy it, there's going to be no purchase order. They already spent it. Legally, we're responsible for paying that bill. I give it back to them, Heather puts the purchase order in, then they bring it back to me, and we pay it. So, that really doesn't solve your problem.
Right. Francine?
Right?
My question is, is the issue the fact that they have to generate a purchase order that's causing all this, or could you word it differently in saying that they would need to have prior approval before they make a purchase? Is it one of the same, or is this this whole purchase order process that things are complicating for you?
Because, yes.
Okay. Heather?
One of the things we had discussed when talking about this as a possibility was the idea that if someone's required to get a purchase order, June 1st to June 30th for anything, 10 bucks, what have you, we also require that the actual invoice reflect the purchase order. So, that would be slightly more work for me for the month because I would have to call the vendor. Say you order some from Puffer Printing for $25. I have to call Puffer Printing, say, "Here's the purchase order. I've just approved it. Here's the number." If the purchase order is not on the bill, something that was procured after June 1st, Vicki needs to send it back to the person right away, and they come before the Board of Selectmen and explain why they didn't bother to get a purchase order moving forward when they have a copy of the requirement.
So, I guess I didn't expect that it would be this much conversation with two weeks until June 1st. So, perhaps we should give this a little more thought before we make it a requirement for this year.
It doesn't have to be that hard, though, because if they have the purchase order, they have to receive that approved by you before they can call to make a purchase. So, if it comes back as a no, that's how we need to set it up. That's usually how a purchase order is. They're going to give it to you, say, "Can I have $20 to go buy whatever?" And you say, "No, there's no money in it. You're going to have to wait till July 1st." Case closed. There is no invoice to pay after that. But, that doesn't necessarily mean they're going to come to Heather or I to say, "Hey, I want to purchase this."
Right, they could just purchase it without telling you.
They could just purchase it without telling you, which happens now with the $500.
And that's the whole point of the whole purchase order, if you don't get prior approval.
But, what she's saying is that when they don't do it, because they won't do it, then it causes a problem, which is why I think maybe we need to make sure that we have this all right in line before we start implementing. Right. Mike, did you have your hand up?
Just a little bit of perspective, too. Just keep in mind that some of these accounts are already running in the red, so waiting three weeks till June 1st is just policy. You're more than likely going to have to go through this exercise again if some quasi policies are before, whether verbally or verbally.
Right. True. Okay.
Suppose, suppose we send a letter or memo to all the departments advising them that prior to expending any funds, they have to get verification from Vicki's office that funding is available?
Would that start your process easier, Vicki?
But, they get a budget report, and they should be looking at those budget reports. And those budget reports, we've tried to make them as up-to-date as possible when we sent them out, you know, expense-wise and even revenue-wise. So, you know, it's like you're taking the department head's responsibility and saying, "Well, we don't trust you to do this, and we're going to try and manage it ourselves." It's really up to them to manage it. And if they don't manage it, then that's when you say to them, "Look, we have proof. You didn't manage this. This is what we're going to do for you next year, or this is what we're going to do going forward."
That's kind of what you're saying now. Really. I mean, if you're saying that the departments are purchasing it anyway, regardless of what you say, we're having a problem with the department heads.
No, they're not purchasing it because there's no money in it. If you put, if you decide you're going to put a purchase order thing in for, you know, requirement in for June, they're not used to that, and I'm not saying that's an excuse, but, you know, people have their habits or whatnot and what they're used to. And they're the department head, and they're managing their budget. They were allocated that budget for themselves. They're going to spend the money, and then they're going to send it to me and say, "Here, I need you to pay this," but they don't have a purchase order. And it's for 25 bucks, like Heather said, for Puffer Printing. I need to kick it back to them. They need to go to Heather. They've already bought it. And then, they're going to put the purchase order in after the fact so that we can pay that bill. So, it really kind of defeats the purpose unless.
There's still money there.
There's still money there. It's not that there's no money. It's just that. Exactly. Because if there's no money there and they come with the bill, it gets sent back to them and says, "Look, you need to get a transfer, or you need to figure out where you're going to pay this from." Or, next year.
So, without the purchase order, and there's no money in there, the responsibility then falls on them to go to the finance committee?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is where the record doesn't have a lot of.
It's 2,200, 2,300 bucks.
But, at least the onus is on them at that point, not on Vicki's office.
Or on Heather for having to do a purchase order after the fact.
But, they can't go, the reserve fund is only supposed to be for unexpected emergencies. So, if you overspent because you didn't realize the bill from last week didn't come out of your expense account yet, and now you're under by $28, you can't go to the finance committee to ask for a reserve fund transfer. You have to come back here, you have to talk to Vicki, you have to say, "I now need to transfer money from line A to line B. Oh, no, I have no money left. You're going to have to transfer it from someone else."
But, it puts the onus on them to say, "Hey, you know, I needed to buy toner because it was buy one, get one free," or whatever, "and I need an extra 20 bucks, but I have it in my wage line. That's where I would need to transfer it," because it's when their line item pays, so.
Take the POs off the table. Send a polite memo to all the department heads advising them that we're coming to the end of the year. If they see they're going to be expending out of an account that doesn't have the money, they should be presenting to us a solution as to where that money is coming from, and just serve them notice.
Kind of like that idea at this point.
And if you find that one particular department spent way more money on, you know, like Heather said, 500 pencils, then next year, you can say to them, "Look, this is what we're going to do. You know, you were guilty, so to speak of..."
Do we have a list of any of those outliers from last year?
There wasn't many at all. There was a few, the wages were really what was over.
Not the expense lines?
It was little dollars here and there, but it wasn't huge amounts of money. I mean, I can give you the, you know, the transfers from last year that we did. I can send those to you if you want.
Just a polite memo.
Francine?
What's the timelines for, in the event that someone makes a purchase which they don't have funds anywhere in their own budget, could you delay payment into the next fiscal year?
Nope. It has to be paid in the fiscal year that it was purchased or the goods and services were gained. So, we would have to pay for that or accrue it by June 30th.
Oh, we can go to town meet.
Not until the next year.
Right, but you still can go to town meeting and get 9/10 vote to pay an old bill.
You could. I mean, if you didn't have to do that, I wouldn't suggest it because it doesn't really.
No, I'm not.
Yeah. But, I'm just, yes, you can, because we had to do that with a few bills that were, you know, and sometimes things slip through the cracks, but not too often.
Polite memo.
Does anyone have any objections to a polite memo at this point?
You can try it and see what happens.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to say, I think the department heads are well aware of their budgets, and I think that by micromanaging and irritating them, I mean, I understand that, you know, everything has to be accounted for. I get that. But, I just feel like if we just irritate them so much, because you're saying that they're not doing it.
At this point, because the only account currently that is in the red is the park wages, because they're wages. All the rest of these are anticipation of expenses that they will need for the end of the year.
Okay. So, let's set a polite memo out, please.
Should that come from me or Vicki as the accountant?
I think maybe.
I would send it from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Should Vicki sign jointly?
Yes. If I'm signing anything, Vicki, you're signing it with me.
Are there any other questions regarding?
I am that guy. What can I say? I'm not supposed to be well-liked.
Do you need to know that we voted?
Yes.
Sarah, do you want me to do it?
Yes, please.
At our meeting upstairs, we voted to approve the transfers.
Thanks. Do you have a new chairman yet?
We have a new chair, and we're doing that shortly.
Just wondering.
Liz, do you want me to bring up another short budget that may be occurring with the police department?
We could ask if they're aware. Go ahead. Charlie?
I was meeting with the police chief today, and he's concerned that his overtime budget's going to be a problem, given the personnel problems that are occurring there. I suggested he talked to the finance committee, excuse me, and that I was going to make the Board of Selectmen aware that this may be an issue by the end of the year.
Does he have a number associated with it?
He doesn't at this point in time. There's other stuff going on internally that we need to talk about privately. But, you know, it's just business in the way it is. But, be aware of the fact that he is going to have some concerns with overtime.
You said the police department?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving on. Thank you, Finance and Vicki. Have fun at your shindig. Town Ministry report, this says nothing. Select board updates and liaison reports. Did we let Shannon know who she was the liaison to?
I thought you'd want to notify her.
I don't have it in front of me, so.
Shannon, congratulations. You are the clerk of the Board of Selectmen.
I'm finance committee, you are liaison.
The liaison to the finance committee.
Liaison, yeah.
I'd be happy to.
They'll be happy to let you know when their next meeting is.
I do have an update for the. I do have an update for the Community Preservation Committee.
Okay, go ahead.
Which is, for the Community Preservation Committee, the committee has agreed to pass over Article 13B due to incomplete information.
What's 13B?
13B was a contract that was in the Parks Department. And I actually brought the article so I could read it. So, transfer funds, undesigned FY15, to see if the town can vote to transfer the amount of $18,752.89 to complete, to fund the completion of an additional project for the LeBree Field. So they're going to pass it over because they're looking into the amount.
Do they think it's too high or too low?
Well, they just want more information.
Okay. Okay. Um, School Committee is meeting on Thursday night, the same night as the PQB. So I will have to make a riveting choice between which one to go to and I will let you know at our next meeting or report on one or the other. Also, there is, only because I'm not sure if I'll say it. Um, for everybody watching, we have some exciting stuff going on this weekend. There is a tag sale at the Senior Center. There is a tag sale at the church. There is a book sale at the library. The Mothers Club is having a rummage sale at Conan Park. And the Women's Club is having a plant sale at Conan Park. And if you read Mr. Floyd's newsletter, he has given you directions, I'm pretty sure, on how to get in one direction to all of them. Is that true? So it's supposed to be a beautiful weekend. So stop by and buy someone else's old stuff that will make your house look new and some plants for your yard. Are there any other liaison report?
Public Safety Building Committee will be hosting an open forum an hour prior to our annual town meeting on the 19th. It will be in the same room. Please, if you have questions, come on down and we'll try to set your mind at ease as to where we're heading with this project.
So 6 o'clock you'll start?
We'll start at 5:30.
5:30 in the cafeteria for anybody who needs more information or questions answered about the public safety complex. Anybody else? Heather, are you raising your hand over there?
No.
Okay. Open time for the public. You look very serious right now.
Tammy Walunas, 298 College Highway. Back, uh, April 25th, there was an articles, a brief articles come out where it had two more, um, articles that were going to be discussed. And at the review that the moderator gave just last week, those two articles were not on it. I was curious as to what happened to them. The first one was the sale of property on Madison Avenue. And the second was the fire hydrant bylaw.
So the fir, if I may.
Yeah, please.
The first one being the sale of the property, the problem we ran into is a few years ago, the reason this ended up on my desk in the first place is our treasurer, Donna Whiteley, went to sell the property at auction, had to pull the property because the problem became that the town was supposed to have inherited the property from a deed from the woman who used to own it in lieu of paying taxes or in lieu of foreclosure, rather. What ended up happening was we couldn't find record that the town actually voted to accept the deed of the property. And there was no line in the deed itself that said that we were accepting it in lieu of taxes. The next problem we ran into when we recently researched this was the fact that not only did we not have a vote for that, you can't sell the property unless you voted to accept it in the first place and then you vote to sell it. The problem is the woman who originally did it is, we believe, is no longer with us. So we have to go back and probably pay a little bit in legal counsel in order to obtain a corrected deed. And then from there, we'll move forward. On the, does that answer the first question? Okay. On the fire hydrant bylaw, problem is, we were looking for samples from other communities. I pretty much sent on listserv the entire state, couldn't find any. There were two that were sent to me. They didn't make sense. I don't even think they pertain to what we were looking for. We will continue to work on it. We just didn't have the language to go with. And starting from scratch is really rough on these.
All right. There you go. Thank you. Anyone else for open time for the public? At this point, we're going to move on to a request from, can I borrow your iPad? Mine's, it's doing something funny and it's asking me to buy something for $999.
Yikes.
I didn't think you'd want me to say yes to that, given that we just transferred some money.
I know this person. I printed all my material.
The molten voice did something to the iPad. We're going to move on to a request from Ed LeBree for his son, Real LeBree, to attend Westfield Vocational High School with transportation to be the sole responsibility of the student's family. So for those of you who don't know, we provide transportation to students who wish to go to Smith Vocational School, but not to those students who wish to go to Westfield Vocational School. Mr. LeBree has requested that his son attend Westfield Voc. The cost is actually $4,000 less than attending Smith Vocational. There are no objections from the Hampshire Regional School District except that a contract needs to be completed, stated that the sole responsibility of transportation for the student is on the family. Working, we're working on putting together a contract as we speak. We asked the superintendent to submit a letter as well. I believe in my hand is the contract. Mr. LeBree, do you have anything that you would wish to add? Does that sound about right?
That sounds right.
Okay.
Unless you want to get into the reasons on why we prefer to go to Westfield versus Smith at this point.
I think that's a parent's prerogative.
Yeah. That's your own personal choice. Do I need to read this memorandum into the record or not?
You shouldn't have to.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns about letting Real go to Westfield Vocational School instead of Smith Vocational School?
No.
No.
The only thing I was mentioning is just the substance of what you're signing. So it's memorandum of understanding between the parents, the town of Southampton, and also the Hampshire Regional School District through their superintendent, that there is no objections for Real to go to Westfield as long as transportation is provided by the parents for the duration of his attendance at Westfield, provided he gets accepted.
I have no concerns.
Make a motion to sign, approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Do you want me to pass this one? That's it. All right. We have PCFs for two temporary positions until June 30th of 2015. The appointment of the Health Agent Geraldine Swanson, not to exceed 20 hours per week at $24 an hour. And also a temporary position of the Health Agent Ronald Lauren, not to exceed 10 hours per week at $24 an hour. These are both temporary appointments, which means they are for 12 weeks. At that point, we will need to see a new PCF. Would anyone like to look at these before they sign them or make a motion to sign?
Make a motion to sign.
One second.
Is there any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Maybe somebody disagreed at one point because it's all ripped out.
It was a debate, obviously.
Um, next, we have the approval of a payout of vacation time for Larry Carney. He has earned vacation time through fiscal '16 of $1,780. Mr. Carney resigned without notice on, this says on Tuesday, last Tuesday?
Yes, last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday. He is very upset that he wasn't able to receive his payout for fiscal '16, earn vacation time without, with his prior paycheck. And we explained to him that each of these fiscal year payouts has been, has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. The calculations for this payout are on the attached sheet. Did Vicky put this together or you?
Vicky's office compiled this. Donna also saw it before it came to our office.
Gotcha. Would anyone like to take a look at it before you approve the payout?
It's in the packet.
Just checking. I would accept a motion to approve the payout for Larry Carney.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the annual audit letter of representation. This is a formality to sign. The treasurer, accountant, and town administrator have already prepared responses to the management letter, which I believe are also in your packet. Once both letters are returned to the auditors, they'll schedule a meeting with the auditors and the town. Generally, Ed and I have been at that meeting to see, talk to the auditors and see the responses and see where we're different, where we will move forward to. At this point, we just need to sign the letter so that we can make that meeting. So I would accept a motion to sign the audit letter of representation.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? We have warrants.
Before we have warrants, did we not have a permit request for the pavilion?
Not today.
We had an email inquiring about it, but Art has been working on contacting the individual to get the documentation.
Have you had a chance to look at that?
I have.
Ladies, have you had a chance to look at the warrants? Would you like me to pass them down? While they're looking at the warrants, our next regular meeting is on May 19th, six, at 6 o'clock for the Board of Selectmen in the library to do some small things. The public safety complex will hold an information meeting at 5:30 in the cafeteria. June 2nd is a regular Board of Selectmen meeting in this room at 6:30. The annual town meeting is May 19th, starting at 7 o'clock in the Norris Cafeteria. Tell your friends, find a babysitter. Lots of fun. Um, that's it for the regular meeting. So when someone's ready, if you could read the warrants, we can approve and sign them.
Right here, right? Okay. Oops, sorry. So it's this one right here, right? The W-1544B, 300 and, 346,000. Oh, this is a school. 340, 349,608,56 cents.
I don't think it's 349 million.
Sorry. 349,608,56 cents.
Is there a second?
Sorry about that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so this one's a W-15-46, 89,903,087 cents.
Is there a second? All those in favor? There's one more warrant, 15-46A, in the amount of $8,500. I need a motion to sign.
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
At this point, we're going to move into executive session. We will not be returning into open session. We'll move into executive session per mass general law, Chapter 38, Section 21. For number one, to discuss the physical condition or mental health of an individual. For number one, to discuss the complaints against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. And to discuss the complaints against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. By roll call, vote please.
Charlie Kinnick, aye.
Molten, aye.
Cheers, aye.
Thank you all for coming. Hope you have a great night. Get home before it storms.